Good evening. Welcome to the City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. Tonight's August 15th, and these are our rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The Council will hold a public hearing and make a final decision on all matters before the Commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats unless denials or conditional approvals are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or the Community Development Department staff for details for Council hearings. An applicant will be given 10 minutes to present their request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker being allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicants will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will be closed and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not generally be, will not individually be discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in City Government. Assisted listening devices are available for meetings in this room. To better serve you when possible, please notify the City at least three business days in advance at (283) 4209 should special accommodations be required. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on Media Cable Channel 7.1 or 7.2 for customers with that service. Transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled to and from Dart Central Station at 620 Cherry Street. To reserve your route, please call Dart on call scheduling at (283) 8136. Calls for trips will be accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. Please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. So, forum has been established, and at this time is there motion for the approval of our minutes of our August 18th? Okay, thanks everybody. Alright, it's been properly moved to approve the minutes of our August 18th, or our August 1st meeting, excuse me. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Alright, thank you. And now, on the consent agenda tonight, there are two items. The first item is a request from HRC for vacation of the following segments for right-of-way adjoining property at 1170 and 1210 Tuttle Street to provide for encroachments of balconies and subservice footings for the Fusion East and Fusion West multifamily dwellings. Is there anyone in the audience, is the applicant here tonight for consent? Okay, and you agree with the staff recommendation? Thank you. And is there anyone in the audience who wishes to hear this item? Otherwise, it will remain on the consent agenda as is. Is there anyone on the Commission that wishes us to pull this item? Alright, seeing none, item number one will remain on consent. Item number two is a city-initiated request for property located at 727 and 730 East Second Street, 827 through 861 East Second, 205 through 225 Maple Street, 350 Maple Street, and 101 through 284 East Center Street, 832 through 848 East Fourth Street, 225 East Center Street, and 200 Des Moines Street. This is a determination as to whether the PUD conceptual amendment is in conformance with Plan Des Moines and rezoning property from DR, which is Downtown Riverfront District, to PUD, and also review and approval of the Bridge District PUD conceptual plan for 121 existing and future row dwelling units within the banks. So, is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to pull this item tonight from Seeing none, is there anyone on the Commission that wishes to hear this item? Alright, those two items will remain on consent, and is there a motion?
I'll move consent.
Thank you. All of us in favor of our consent items, as read, please signify by raising your hand. Okay.
I need you staying on both.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Make sure, can let me know when you're, thank you. Alright, so for our public hearing items tonight, it's my understanding that item number three has requested to move this to be continued to our September 5th meeting, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, we had a request from Rally Cat Properties to continue to the September 5th hearing. They also modified their application. They're requesting a amendment of the Plan DSM from the low-density residential to medium-density residential, and instead of the community mixed use, so they're not proposing any commercial use or zoning with a commercial use. And then, they will modify what their proposal is to, they still are asking for an NPC zoning district, but they will be requesting up to seven row units, which would bring it up to the medium-density allowance on that property.
So, is the applicant present tonight?
I didn't see anybody here from there.
So, we'll just assume that September 5th is agreeable to them?
Yeah, we had a written request, and then staff will actually re-notice it.
Alright.
Based on that modified application.
So, is there action to move this to our September 5th meeting?
I move.
Thank you. All those in favor of moving item number three to the September 5th Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, please signify by raising your hand. So, that brings us to item number four. This is the request from Swears Properties for review and approval of a site plan, luxury limousine and coach bus under design guidelines for vehicle display lots for property located at 1601 East Army Post Road to allow for development of a 20,800 square foot building and a 27,000 square foot building to be used for garage-ing of vehicles.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the subject property is on East Army Post Road, a ways east of the East 14th intersection on the south side of the road, a large, fairly large property. There's a natural drainage way on the eastern edge, so they're looking, if you look at the site plan that was in your packet, they're proposing to develop the western two-thirds, approximately, not really looking to disturb the eastern portion due to the sensitive slopes there. I'll show you the pictures from the street level. You can see there's a significant amount of vegetation in that drainage area, but then it kind of opens up as you're looking south. So, as you can see on the layout, there, I believe that they're only proposing one of the buildings in the immediate, but are looking to be able to develop two buildings as they either expand or consolidate more of their business at this location. They'll be storing motor coaches and limousines on the site, so these are just general storage buildings for the most part. I'll let them kind of speak to their operation a little bit. They're able to drain to the natural drainage way, but they will have to provide the stormwater management requirements. They do have substantial amount of landscaping already on the site, but they're proposing to meet all of the perimeter lot and interior lot landscaping requirements. I think there's one comment that they, in their administrative review comments, that they would have to do some things to identify some of the trees in the existing proposal. They have resubmitted something very recently. We haven't reviewed it since this staff report went out, so there's a good chance when it comes to the administrative review comments, they've addressed a number of those. I'm going to just go down the list here in the staff recommendation. I should note, one of the requirements that they haven't demonstrated that I'm aware of is that we are requiring a sidewalk that comes from the complete streets policy. This is a priority one level street, Army Post, East Army Post Road is considered priority one, so we don't even consider waiving that at the staff level, but I'll let them speak to that. The other, kind of the other major point is we're asking for masonry on the front facades of the buildings and wrapping around the ends to give it a stronger appearance towards Army Post Road. I believe they're going to propose an alternate that looks at architectural metal panels. So, that'll be up to the Commission to kind of determine if that's going to be acceptable or not. They may have other things that come into play if they want to get into tax abatement requirements that wouldn't necessarily fall into your review. So, down the road, even if you approve something tonight that's, you know, that's different, they may still modify their proposal to meet tax abatement, so. Just wanted to make you aware of that. So, staff is recommending approval of the submitted site plan, subject to compliance with all administrative review requirements of the permit and development review. We want to make sure there's a note on here that there's no elevated display. I don't think they're proposing any, but we want that note there for enforcement in the future, because technically, they could leave to, you know, in two years, a vehicle display lot could come in, and we just want to make sure that there's those things in place to prevent the, some of the other things under the design guidelines. Provision of a note that states employee and customer parking areas shall be clearly delineated, a note that states all portions of the property used for outside parking display and/or storage of motor vehicles for sale, rental, or hire shall be identified, and that the perimeter shall be striped or otherwise conspicuously marked on the paving. That way, when our enforcement people are out there, they know the areas that have to be kept unimpaired, and the tendency is that display occurs outside of those. Compliance with our city landscape standards, open space plannings provided throughout the site, so we want some distribution of the plant material as well. Even if they're meeting the counts, there's some desire to have that distributed throughout the site. Provision of a minimum five-foot sidewalk on East Army Post Road and a pedestrian connection from the building entrance to get to the public sidewalk. The northernmost 30 feet of any structure, including the front and side facades, would be clad entirely with masonry materials. That would include stone. I believe that could also include a concrete material that would have a pattern of brick or stone on that. Exclusive of window and door openings. The balance of any structure shall have a minimum four-foot tall masonry wainscot around the perimeter, so everywhere else, and that helps if there's overhead doors on sides that, when vehicles back or come in, if that wainscot is on those side elevations, that they're getting some strength there and some durability. Provision of a note that states any dumpster enclosure shall be constructed with masonry walls and steel gates to match the structures on the site. They may be keeping their trash inside if they, if that's the decision, they would need to note that also on the site plan. Oh, and I skipped one, I apologize. Number nine is the note that would prohibit the outside storage and that any indoor storage shall be accessory to their C2 district use. Are there any questions at this point? And again, they've done some things since the staff report's gone out, so I'm going to let them speak to those and how they've, they've probably complied with a number of these things.
Alright, thank you. So, at this time, would the applicant like to step forward? And if you would state your name.
No, okay, yeah, okay. How you doing there? Good afternoon, Commission members. My name is Scott Swears. I'll be representing 1601 East Army Post Road. Started this transportation company about 10 years ago, and we've slowly grown and rented a number of facilities. We're currently just shy of 30 vehicles and want to continue to grow. And to grow, we have to have a facility that works and works into our future growth, and the amount of storage space that we currently are utilizing or needing into the future is just getting too costly from a rental perspective, so I found this property and I'm trying to develop it. I'm not going to speak a lot on behalf of the property. I have two representatives that will do so, but I plan on building a beautiful building, having a lot of pride in the property, and bringing some added value to this area. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Swears. I mean, did you want to introduce it?
Yes.
Alan May.
Introduce themselves.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Alan May. I used to do this 20 years ago. I was the planning administrator back when we did like 801 Grand and Principal Park and Sculpture Park and all those fun things. So, Scott asked me about trying to help him go through the site plan process, and I think there's actually some technical definitional issues that are more confusing than what it is, because he doesn't have a vehicle display storage lot. I know, in working with Eric, the idea is too concerned to stop a vehicle storage lot. That could occur, who knows, 20 years around. Things change, things happen. But I think just in first taking a look at the staff report and the recommendation and everything that are in there, we can comply with items one through six, no problems. Question we have on item seven, question on item eight, item nine doesn't appear to be a problem, or ten. Specifically, taking a look at the five-foot sidewalk, if any of you have been down Army Post, there's no sidewalks down there. I understand a Class A designation for that purpose, but that's a future planning, and sometimes those are decades out. So, we don't see, first of all, that this operation would have any walk-in customers. That usually doesn't occur. There's no walk-ins, you know, from summer land or anything of that, so we figure that there should not be a sidewalk. If that were to be a requirement in the future, that, that sounds possible, but today it doesn't seem realistic. Taking a look at the structure of having it clad in masonry materials, that's a neat idea, but this is not a PUD. You've got other structures there that have other designs other than that use, and we think, we have the architect who's going to explain some of those things that we think will be beneficial. I just take a look at it from a design standpoint, I guess we have a couple metal buildings downtown, like the two round buildings. We've got the one design with the Catholic charities, that I am paid design, that's a, actually, when I was on the rope, we designed that, or designated that as a landmark. So, I think there's, there's reason for the architect to identify the considerations for that as well. So, other than that, I think the real aspect is clearly out from a definitional standpoint, his use as a limo operation is not a vehicle storage thing, and I know the ordinance is kind of odd in the wording of that, but we think we can comply with everything except the sidewalk provision and the design. I have Dave the Architect come forward and explain about the design. Thank you very much.
First, we'll ask, are there any questions?
And if you do have any questions later on, we appreciate the rebuttal, and I know you guys have a fun time serving, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Churchill. I'm building designer, not an architect. We've come up with a solution rather than masonry, and it's an architectural panel system that provides a geometric kind of a design. Masonry is nice, but it doesn't necessarily fit this particular building nor the owner's requirements. Essentially, I have a colored sample on the back. If you'd like to see it, I can bring it up. Basically, it's a three-part system. There's a band of glossy black that goes around the building that matches the eyebrows over the windows. There's a dark color, and then there's a lighter aluminum color. Around the bottom to run a masonry four-foot wainscot all the way around the building, I think is an interesting concept. In this particular area, I think it's kind of a waste of money. Economics don't play into it, I understand. We can certainly provide a panelized system that gives you the impression that it's a different material than your typical pole barn metal building panel, which is not what I'm proposing. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them after, or now.
I think, I think it'd be nice, is it a small sample that you could bounce around?
Sure.
Okay.
I agree.
So, you're going to have to go back to the mics. Yeah.
The darker color is the darkest color that shows. I'll better cover it up. And the lighter color is the finish, so it's not a textured finish, but I can propose a textured finish for the wainscot, because it does, it won't, it looks better than just a flat finish. It's a insulated panel, makes the building more efficient, low maintenance. The masonry next to the doors can be, the doorways and structure could be protected with bollards rather than masonry. We could certainly take a look at that. I know it's not on the plan, we can amend that. It's a light color, a dark color, and a medium color to give it some texture. There's a number of different buildings around town that are using this kind of a system. There used to be an older system called Lucabond, where it has a, the space in between the panels to give it a little more texture, and that's what we're proposing. Helpful? Any more?
So, if I understood correctly, the unreadiness, well, first of all, are there any questions? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
So, what's your foundation detail at the perimeter? Do you have a stem wall? And if you do, does it come up above the slab, or tell me about your stem?
It's a, it's a system that's suspended off of the metal frames. That's, it's a...
So, the footing itself doesn't, does it go above the slab on grade, or does the footing stop at the slab on grade?
It's a slab on grade that's in between the footings that support the metal frames. This does go down. If the question is, is it floored or is it connected? We don't have the detail of that yet.
No, actually, the question was more about just sort of durability at the base between folks that are pushing snow around and that...
You'd be pushing snow on the side that has the bollards, because that's where the garage door. On the other sides, there's no paving.
Well, my assumption is the metal manufacturer wants you to stay a minimum amount of dimension above the grade.
I would assume it'd be about eight inches. You'd have to...
So, then what makes up that eight inches?
The edge of the concrete.
Okay, so there's an eight-inch piece of concrete that I'm seeing?
At this point, there is, yes. We could do patterned concrete on that edge.
Thanks.
Yes.
Any other questions? Alright, so any questions for Mr. Swears or anyone else on the team? Seeing none? Sure.
I guess I don't know how familiar you guys all are with this panel system, but there's down on Hull and Guthrie, there was a large building built where Bauer Belt used to be across the street, so that's the very similar paneling system. So, in my opinion, masonry is fantastic, cement is fantastic, designing in cement is fantastic, but it's old. This is modern. This is a modern design. This is a sexy design, and that's what we want to go for. I have no problem with masonry. I just think this is a better option for the future.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would speak in favor of the applicant's project? Alright, seeing none, is there any questions or concerns about the project?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street with the East River Lake Neighborhood Association. First concern was the developer did not have any meeting with the neighbors at all, so I, and I called and talked with, I don't remember which, Eric or Bird or, before, this was to be on the last one, and at that time, a lot of information was not known yet, and I did not get a chance to talk to any of them before tonight's meeting, but it looks like still a fair amount is still unknown. So, first, I've seen this, and I have a question, is this the same material that's going to be on the front of the building then?
Yeah, this is a smaller sample, so the actual panel is pretty much larger.
But it would be on three sides of the building then? Okay. So, so I don't know much about this, and I'm hearing it for the first time, so I don't know whether to think it's a good idea or a bad idea. Didn't have a chance to go look at one of the other buildings that they're describing that it currently... at one of the other buildings that they're describing that it currently is on. In terms of the sidewalk, I understand this is the issue that comes up every time we ask somebody to be the first one in the, in the hopper with a sidewalk, or a trail, or whatever. But if, but if we look at the history of how these things develop, Three Lakes, which is going to come up in the next item, had the same issue that they were disconnected from the trail, and now they're connected all the way to Easter Lake, and by fall, they'll be connected all the way to downtown. So, somebody has to be the first in, and I understand it's an expense, but I would suggest that that needs to stay in as an item, even though I understand their objection to it. I also want to make sure that we've had this vehicle display lot thing, I understand they don't want it to be a vehicle display lot, and I haven't a chance to review everything, but I want to make sure that it's definitely not a vehicle display lot, and it sounds like all those things are covered in, in this particular one. So, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Oh, wait a minute, any questions? None.
I have a question for staff. Where's the, the closest other sidewalk? Lengthwise, or distance?
Probably close to East 14th, I don't have an aerial to zoom out, but we're getting pieces on site plans in, yeah, site, around the mall.
Okay.
So, but, and then, I'll give you an example, like Casey's, to the east, they're kind of floating out there at Indianola and East Army Post, they have sidewalk on their front edge.
They do, okay.
How long is it?
I'm sorry?
How, like, how far does it run, there is a sidewalk?
On, on the front edge?
Yeah.
For Casey's, or on their entire? They actually have a trail on their east bound, east front edge on Indianola Road, and then, just a sidewalk on their south front edge.
But it just ends at the end of there?
It does, it's a, it's a Shel Silverstein model, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't have to leave those for the record.
I do?
No, you don't.
Okay, so, at this point, do you, or do you want to respond to?
Yeah, he's going to show us the building.
I was just going to show you an example of a building.
You can always move it closer to the camera.
Is this in Des Moines?
There you go.
Put it down.
Yeah.
See if it'll focus.
There it is.
He said Holland, Holland.
Put it down.
East.
Anyway, there's, yeah, there you go.
Uh-huh.
So, this is a very similar panel, obviously, it's a little bit larger building, but that's, that's what it could look like, so a little more modern, a little more futuristic, I think, very clean and refreshing.
While you're up here, can you respond to the neighborhood association? Lack of engagement?
Lack of engagement as far as?
Talking to them, having a meeting.
Having a meeting with the association.
To be perfectly honest, I, this is, I'm, I'm new to this, and so I wasn't aware that I was supposed to talk to him. I have absolutely no problem, I could, I'll set up a meeting as soon as we get done, and answer any questions if he wants me to talk to him today, or in the future, I could certainly do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think Eric's going to be fine.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the site plans do not require applicants to engage the neighborhood.
Right.
We always recommend it, but it's not a requirement. Whereas on a rezoning, that's actually a requirement that they do conduct a neighborhood. I did want to point that out.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, then, sing none, I'll close the public hearing. And, Commission, what's your pleasure?
Well, I think we should have a discussion about the sidewalk, what we think about the sidewalk. You know, we've been doing this long enough that I do think it's true, Mr. Ballard said that, you know, at times, it seems like it's the sidewalk to nowhere, but what we're trying to do is connect, and, so while it may not be walkable now, it would be in the future, I think. So, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out, what do, what do the rest of you think about the sidewalk?
I agree. We, we need it, this is the time to get it, so we, we need to ask for it.
Maybe Casey's do it.
Any other comments?
I have a comment about...
In the past, I've waived it, when it was on, not on a busy street, but, yeah, East Army Post Road is a busy road, so therefore, I'm less inclined to waive it, because it has to start somewhere, and that East Army Post Road, I think, is more walkable than, I think, was one, a street off University Avenue a couple of months ago that came across. So I would be inclined to starting somewhere, not waiving it, otherwise, we'll never get started.
And I want to, I, I did want to make a comment on the material, I do think that that is modern-looking, but I don't know that much about it, what do you think? Greg?
I, I think, I think, I don't think it's necessary to put masonry around the building. I'm most interested in the base detail, just sort of the durability of how the metal holds up in the salt, and the snow, and stuff, and all that stuff. So, if, if and when people are interested, I got a motion, I can float out there, but...
Go for it.
Go ahead, go for it.
I think the motion I'd put out is, I recommend approval, items one through seven, to follow staff recommendation, the sidewalk stays in. Item eight, I would propose to change item eight to read as follows. "The front and side facade shall have a durable base detail as approved by the planning director." I think it's possible, the photo that, that you showed, I think, could be a good base detail. There needs to be some amount of concrete or something at the bottom. I think the system has something, whether it's eight inches, I do not think it needs to be four feet, whether it's eight inches or two feet or one feet, I think they can work through that detail, and I think you need to show that, and draw that, and get to that level. So I think there is a solution there, I think the metal's fine, I don't have a problem with that. And then I would also keep items nine and 10. That's my suggestion.
Okay. So, you're recommending approval, items one through seven. Item eight, you would change to the northern, the front side facade?
I'll reread it.
Okay, thank you.
Just, it just needs to say, "The front and side facade shall have a durable base material as approved by the planning director," so they need to work that out with him.
And then the balance?
And nine and 10 stay as staff wrote.
Does everybody understand the motion? I'll make sure you got it, okay? All those in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your hand. All right, thank you very much. Our next item tonight is item number five. This is a request from J. Larson Homes for a first amendment to Three Lakes Estates Phase Two PUD conceptual plan for property in the vicinity of 3001 block of East Army Post Road, to allow for reconfiguration of the proposed public street layout for dwelling of 80 lots for single-family semi-detached dwellings, and 200 lots for single-family dwellings.
So, to give you a little bit of orientation here, Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is the, the gold outlined area is the second phase, or Phase Two PUD, it's actually a separate PUD from the original Three Lakes Estates PUD, which originally was kind of a straight, and then when this got rezoned, it incorporated this edge here, which allowed it to do, kind of finish off the development. I believe there was about, in the late 2000s, you, some of you might have been on this commission, when a proposal came forward to make a, kind of a Tuscan townhome look. It never actually got approved, it was called the Palms. So, we're actually still on the original 2001 conceptual plan, and the preliminary plat that followed that, so some construction is actually going on out here on townhomes in this large parcel down here, in this area, and there's some lots that would feed off of a public street connection right through here, so that's actually going on, based on the currently approved preliminary plat. They've got public improvement plans and things that have gone through council. So now, what's being proposed essentially is everything else, being built with a slightly different configuration. They want to reroute the street system a little bit, so there wouldn't be a second connection. I think I'm going to show you the, kind of the proposed PUD that CEC colored up to, it kind of lets you kind of understand kind of the different sections of what they're proposing to do, so it's easier to visualize that. And this should be in the packet, too. So, they're, they're proposing an area A up here, which was originally proposed for a mix of row houses and bi-attached, that was a little more dense. They're proposing, I believe, 80 of these units, is that correct?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one? Okay. It's 80, isn't it?
Eighty-one, this is the size.
The, the bi-attached?
Oh, inside.
Yeah, yeah. So, originally, I think it was 120 units of townhomes, and they, they actually crossed over into this area as well.
It's now 68.
Oh, it's now 68, okay. So, this area would be the, in our ordinance currently, it's called single-family semi-detached, but their owner occupied with a common wall. Some people call them twin homes, some people call them bi-attached. For purposes of our zoning change, we're going to want to make sure they're defined as semi, single-family semi-detached. Then, they have this area B, which is kind of a larger area, that is proposed to be the 65 to 75-foot wide lots, which the currently approved PUD essentially has that for the But one thing that the currently approved PUD has is a minimum house size of 1,200 on any of those large lots. Then, they're also proposing some 45 to 55-foot lots down in this area, to kind of, and they're doing that away with the larger lots separating from the existing development, to provide that transition. The other thing that's different from the currently approved PUD is that this, this is a defined open space area, whereas in the, in the current PUD, it's actually part of people's backyards, that lots with line go right to the middle of this, there was just a preservation easement. And then this road actually double-loaded against the lake, and connected up here, fairly close to the other entrance of the development. So they're, instead, they're bringing this around and connecting, and then, having that common entrance on the north, on Army Post, they still have this on the south, right here, and they have another street connection to the south, and then actually two going east, so that when an area to the east opens up for development, I think that it may be relying on some more sewer coming from southeast rather than the northwest, which most of this, I think, is serviced off of sanitary sewer trunks that run along the lake system where you see the trail, that area. They're proposing these narrow lots, but they've only defined a bare minimum of 1,200, regardless of what parcel it's on, and, and when staff looked at this, we thought that we really need some proportionality here. We actually kind of took cues from a recently approved rezoning with the same developer on the northeast side by Brook Run that you saw, and where you had a north area that had the smaller lots, and then, the southern area that you wanted to see the larger homes. I think we're trying to follow those same cues, and have a mix of the housing here with the, the bi-attached or single-family semi-detached homes, the larger single-family lots with some larger house size minimums, and then the smaller house size minimums for the narrower lots at the southeast, and the, so you have kind of a range of affordability, too. I know you've heard a lot about affordability of late, so that's something that was taken into consideration. So I'm going to go down here through the list of comments, we have five, but then there's a lot of sub parts to the portion with revisions in regards to the single-family. First of all, we, we want to make sure we leave ourselves the ability to get the compliance with the Mylar submittal requirements, and make sure everything's finalized before we actually sign a final Mylar. Second, we do want an addition of the, a note on the plan, that the property comply with tree removal and mitigation. The last time this was approved, that wasn't a thing, so, they need to bring, some of these things have to be kind of rolled in, that have happened since the development kind of went stalled for a while there, so. Three, revision to require all public sidewalks to be five feet in width, that's just a change in the standards, again, since this was originally approved. Revision of the fence allowance note to also allow solidwood fences in rear yards. I think what we've found throughout all of our single-family PUDs is that people want fences, they're going to put up fences, even if you don't get a permit. I think it's better to have a standard established for a, a uniform type of privacy fence, and then, we're still okay with the chain link being required to be black clad, that actually is consistent with developments in this area. Revision of notes to the plan to include the following requirements for single-family and single-family semi-detached dwellings. "No same single-family or single-family semi-detached house for an elevation shall be built on adjacent lots." And what I should point out, I believe that the types they're looking at are the same types that were approved for Beaver Cove up on lower Beaver, so there's a, they have two different bi-attached housing types, so they can alternate those, or change those up a little bit, so that they're not identical on adjoining lots. "We want the front facade of any single-family or single-family semi-detached house constructed to contain either a front porch of not less than 60 square feet, or stone or brick masonry," that's an "or," "stone or brick masonry siding covering at least a third of the facade. "See, all windows and doors of any single-family or single-family semi-detached house shall have trim that is no less than four nominal inches in width. The roof of any single-family, single-family semi-detached house constructed shall have asphalt-type shingles or cedar shakes with the standard three-tab, which isn't so standard anymore. Shingles be prohibited. One E, one sing, on single-family lot sizes less, less than 65 feet in width, the following minimum house sizes shall be constructed." Basically, the one-story would have a 1,250 minimum, which is only 50 square feet more than they were proposing. Again, this is right out of what they just had approved on the northeast side. One-and-a-halves should be 1,350, and two-story shall be constructed with a minimum 1,400 square feet of above-grade finished floor area. On single-family lot sizes, 65 feet in width or greater, the following minimum house sizes shall be constructed on one-story, 1,400, one-and-a-half, 1,600, two-story, 1,800. on one-story, 1,400; one-and-a-half, 1,600; two-story, 1,800. We want to make sure that the exterior materials are limited to masonry, either brick or stone, vinyl of no less than 42 mil thickness, cedar, masonite, or cement fiber board. I believe we've interpreted that engineered wood product would fall within those categories. For any single-family semi-detached dwellings of brick or stone, wades cut should extend along the full side of the facade on those units. They have side facades on a public street. And I'll point, so these units on these street ends that are on corner lots, basically, they would wrap that stone or brick material around the sides so that there's not a blank presence along those, that other street facade, basically. And then, building elevations for the conceptual plan shall be required to be revised to demonstrate compliance with these provisions. One thing you might note, I believe they already indicated in the notes that there was, there would be a full basement provided, so we didn't require another condition to that effect. That's already in their proposal. So, if that was one of your questions, I did want to point that out. I passed around the comment cards. And this is the responses here. So, we notified the area, which included some existing single-family homes and then the 250 around. So, actually, some of those are within the Three Lakes Phase Two and some of them are just outside. I do have photos, but in all honesty, when you're driving either Pine or Army Post, they sit up above and this area is down where it's really not that visible from those public streets. I can show them to you if you want me to.
And you're showing us?
You want to see them? Yeah, so, I'll just go through them. This is the area I was talking about, the south end off of Pine that's under construction. That's the construction road in. You can barely see the equipment over the berm there along south, along East Pine. And then, as you're on East Army Post, again, the terrain rises up from Army Post and then back down into the development. So, that's actually showing where the trail Jim Ballard mentioned in his last, in the last item is now coming across over here onto Army Post. Looking back kind of the southeast, there is a couple spots where you do see up on the hillside the homes that are already built from a distance. Are there any other questions from, at this point? Or can the developer get a chance?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Eric. Number four, I couldn't find in here. What are they saying they do for fencing?
Well, it's silent, but, so I believe it says only chain link, four-foot chain link fence. And so, I just wanted them to have another option for a privacy fence because I, the tendency is they will get built. And if, it's much better if there's a standard to provide. If they were completely silent, there's a provision in the current ordinance for PUD that's, for single-family dwellings, would basically adhere to the same fencing requirements as they would in a standard, single-family.
Would you be open? You know, there's many neighborhoods, one I live in and others, where there's no fences and kids roam between homes and it's kind of cool and they're doing their thing. And then, there's some where there are low fences and high fences and it's, in some ways, I almost like promoting unless you've got a super attack guard dog, less fencing or lower fencing, but it is designed nicely. You know, it's not junk. Is there, would you be open to the idea of a couple different fence heights or a couple of fence types to try and control your concern about whatever would happen?
Well, I think it's allowing up to a six-foot. So, you could do anything less than a six-foot solid fence.
Oh, two.
And the chain link would be four feet is the way it's written. That's the way they proposed it. So, I think-
I'll see what they say.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not opposed to what your idea is there. I'm just, I think maybe what you're saying can be done-
Okay.
-under this, under the way this is written. Now, I guess the only thing would be if you wanted to expand the palette of materials. Because we have seen some neighborhoods where there's vinyl fencing or, I'm not sure that's what we're going for in this development, but.
Are you saying if there is a fence, it has to be solid wood?
No, it says it would allow for-
It says solid wood.
Fence allowance note to also allow up to six-foot-tall wood privacy fence. I guess if there was concern about, you would want to allow another type of material for privacy fences.
I'll see what they say.
They're generally in the rear yard, so it's really not huge. But, on the perimeters where the yards back up to the street on Army Post or Pine, that may be more of an issue.
So, here's my bigger question. So, last meeting, items E and F you have on here, we as a board sent to council our recommendation to strike minimum square footages for houses. So, what's your thoughts on why you put these in here when you kind of know the flavor of the board?
Well, I kind of was, I think we were taking our cues more actually from the previous proposal from this developer. So, and this is a PUD versus, you know, some of, where we are looking to have things by right. So, this started out with a standard for homes to the west that are already there, some established neighborhood. So, I think we have some argument to be able to have those sizes to keep the compatibility with the existing neighborhood to the west.
Did you have a response?
Just to add to that, I'm not going to get into the exact square footages that are stated here because I don't, I don't work with staff on that. But, having worked with you for a number of years and seeing your work for many years before that, you have approved square footages on PUDs, I think, for at least a decade, if not two. So, it is not out of your practice to have minimum square footages of some number included for single-family residential PUDs.
And I, I'm under the impression, perhaps I'm wrong, but that we would still, you, the staff, would still be able to propose this because the code has not really been enacted yet, correct?
Yes, that's, that's accurate. I think there won't be PUDs going forward. So, in the new code, I don't know if there was a rezoning, for example, as a rezoning condition. I wouldn't say that there wouldn't be a recommendation from the city to have minimum square footages in that event as well. But, we aren't. We're nowhere near that at this point. But, but you're right, the new code isn't in place yet and so, this is not in our current code. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Are there issues with, I guess we can wait till, to hear from them, but they're, yeah.
And again, we sort of matched actually what they had agreed to on another development there. I believe you'll hear there's using the same housing products and things, so hopefully that won't be an issue for them. And I haven't heard from, heard from them that it is, but I'll let them speak to it.
All right. So, at this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name's Ed Arp. I'm with Civil Engineering Consultants representing Jay Larson Homes and John Larson's also here tonight. Eric, of course, has done a very nice job of presenting. I'll show you what we had shown at the neighborhood meeting, which was a very good meeting. I think Jim would concur with me that we had a lot of good discussion and came away all happy and friends, so.
Wow.
The one thing that was somewhat enlightening at the meeting was I showed the difference between the current PUD plan graphically and the proposed. And that answered a bazillion questions because you can, a picture's worth a thousand words. So, I don't know if he can vote.
I can, I'll zoom in.
Can you zoom in? So, at the bottom is the existing PUD as it is today. And colors are a little bit weird here, but this is a multifamily parcel, as Eric's always already mentioned, is being, is under construction. We were following the existing PUD, so we were able to start construction on this piece and on this piece. Now, anything else beyond that, we're asking for the amendment. And as already mentioned, there's a few lots in here that have already been built and a few lots up in here. So, we're connecting up to some existing things, but at the same time, we're making some changes to this particular street in general was one-sided, was really close to this lake. And with the traffic study, we've determined they only, the city would only like one connection to Army Post Road. So, that's the real reason our little amendment and street alignment started. You can also see this was all multifamily. So, these were more than two dwelling units per building. If you just look at this and then look at that, you can see that density has dropped down. We are now with by attached up here and then the smaller lots, the 45 to 55-foot wide lots here. This was a mix of single-family throughout. We've left that in the middle of the project. So, our actual unit count has gone down about 20 units over the whole PUD. When I showed this at the public or at the neighborhood meeting, I think it brought a lot of relief to the neighbors because they realized we weren't adding more townhouses or trying to do apartments or anything like that. It's really a continuation of what they already have. But, it's also meeting some market demand as we, as Eric just mentioned. We do have to provide some more affordable housing and that is a way of doing it now. It's happening in all the cities in the metro area. So, John's very good at this. He's very good with the building types that go on these. As mentioned, we're already doing these projects in other parts of Des Moines. So, in general, that, that made the neighborhood meeting a lot, a lot smoother. With that, I don't have a lot more to add. Eric did a very good job. I'll say on the fences, we kind of like to just let those be kind of what the, what the ordinance allows. We like flexibility. I had wiener dogs and we had to have really good fences. They were fierce in our neighborhood. So, other than that, I don't have anything to add. If you have any questions about the housing, I'll have John come up and show you some of that.
Do you agree with the staff report then?
We do.
One through? One through five?
Move staff?
I would move. I would move staff if there are no-
Okay, well, we, thank you. We still have to ask. We're excited to get there. We, we still, I don't know if Mr. Larson wants to say anything. Okay. So, is there anybody else in the audience that we should speak in favor of this proposal? Here comes your affirmation.
I'm Chair, members of the council, Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street. As was mentioned, we did have a meeting last Wednesday night. It was well-attended, a lot of good conversation. I think in general, everybody is much happier with the changes from the previous PUD. And, but I do address the square footage because I think that's the one thing that probably makes everybody most comfortable. Because generally, we probably would not be that comfortable with the size of some of the lots in the southeast portion of this development without some of those square footage requirements. And I know you passed it out of here, but September 9th, it's going to be at the council and I'm sure that they'll be having a lovely crowd that evening to talk about the way the ordinance reads or the laws read at that point in time. So, and we worked with Mr. Larson. He did the development at the east end of the lake and we're happy with what's been done there. I just want to say, though, on the record that this part of the city will support a bigger house. I know it will. I mean, that's just the bottom line. So, I don't think we need to sell ourselves short. That's why I'm glad we have the minimum square footage in here. I'm not, I'm not, sorry to say, I live in a, like a 2,400 to 2,500-square-foot house in this part of town. So, you can build them, you can sell them. That's just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing the neighborhood's assessment and that is important. Any other comments or questions before I close the pub? Oh, I guess, is there anyone in the audience that wishes, adds objections to the proposal? All right, seeing that is, if there's no other comments from the commission, I'll close the public hearing.
Who's staff?
All right. So, I think, who wants to? All right. So, there's a motion to move staff, items one through five. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay? All right. Thank you. And thank you. So, our final item tonight is item number six. All right. So, item number six is a request from Nelson Development for review and approval of site plan 418 Grant, East Grant, under design guidelines in the C-3B district and under design guidelines for multi, multiple-family dwellings for property located at 418 East Grant Avenue to allow development of a five-story building with 105 multifamily dwelling units, 14,885 square foot feet of first-floor retail area and 19,074 square feet of second-floor office area in the property owned by the city.
So, this is kind of the last piece of the puzzle on the corner of East Fourth and, oops. East Fourth Street and East Grant. Currently, the parking garage is being constructed on this portion of the block. And I'll let them speak to, they are going to do some things to modify this building for its repurposing in relation to what's in front of you tonight for this piece of property. I should also point out that on your next agenda, there will be an item for vacation for balconies and subsurface footings that didn't accompany this submittal. So, you'll prob, that'll probably be, based on whatever happens tonight, that may end up on a consent item, but it still has to come through as well. So, this is going to be a mixed, mixed-use project. I should point out, I believe I was told as I was walking out the door that they have resubmitted. Again, we haven't had a full review of those things that have been resubmitted. And I, my understanding is there is some modification to their proposal that they may want to discuss about some interior block landscaping that was in the proposal. So, if you go to the landscape page, which is sheet L401, up against the existing building there, they have this service area going back to, I believe, their transformers and their enclosures for trash. I also think this is where their fat oil and grease interceptors are going to be located off, away from the street. They were showing planters along here to sort of provide an edge between that and the existing building. My understanding is they still plan to keep an entrance here, so this will kind of serve as a kind of an entrance plaza to get back here. The other thing is, I believe they, not part of this project, but when they do this building, they're looking to have an entrance to East Grant off of this building as well. So, this won't be the sole entrance to the building at ground level, but it's still going to be an important one. So, staff, you know, was supportive of having these planters here as a part of the walkway. But, I'll let them speak to that because they may have come up with some challenges to that. They're not required- They're not required by our typical landscaping policies in the downtown area, but in the overlay, there is the desire to have some soft green spaces within the private side of the property. So from that standpoint, if we can preserve them, staff would definitely support trying to preserve that as it's been proposed. Overall, staff is in support. Some of this will be subject to final urban design review on the final design of the building, but they've resubmitted a design. So in your elevations, you can see that the main base floor is all a masonry-type product. Then they're moving up with other materials as you go up the building. You getting washed out?
Yeah. It's like right...
There's also a significant elevation change as you go from west to east on Grand. So there'll be kind of this arcade-type effect of the lower, the main level to the main entrance at grade here. So there'll be some... Actually, this will be under... You don't really see it on this as you look at this elevation, but it'll be under that. It might be easier to see here. This will be the southwest corner looking east. Lots of glass, a good variety of materials. I'm not sure if Burt stacked it up against any future proposed standards we have coming up, but I would imagine it would come fairly close if not would all... If at worst, would be in front of you tonight, just like it is right now. So staff is comfortable with the elevations. We do want to make sure it does adhere to all the other review comments of the permit center. We want to make sure that the number two on the staff recommendation, that the encroachments are handled. Again, that was put in there before they had submitted their vacation requests, so all of this will be contingent upon vacation request. And then the final design of the building shall be approved by the city's Urban Design Review Board and the city's Planning Administrator. Again, because they'll still have a final review after this process. We want to make sure that they use the autobahn fixtures for their site lighting as well to be compatible with the street fixtures. All utilities shall be undergrounded to the maximum extent possible to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. Site plans shall demonstrate compliance with the landscaping standards. Again, I think if you match it up to the landscaping standards by themselves, it does that. In addition, this has the downtown overlay design guidelines which speak to those soft green spaces. So I think we were looking at that as being met somewhat by the proposed landscaping in the plaza there. Bike racks provided on East Grand and East Fourth Street. And then want to make sure the rooftop mechanical equipment is screened. They're showing a parapet design. It's hard to see up here, but I think there's a system here for their rooftop that probably should adequately do that, but we want that conditioned in the site. Any questions at this point? No responses from the surrounding property owners? I think the development team is here? Yes. So there's not...
Ready for the applicant?
Yeah.
Applicants, if you'd like to step forward.
I was like, what am I looking for? Okay. Oh, hey, I'm Alexander with Nelson Construction and Development. As a pretext to this, like our overall block plan, this is really the last step in us completing this entire square block. We are currently under construction with a parking garage that is on the north side of the site. And actually, 430 East Grand, the building on the southeast of the site, is one of the first buildings that Mike Nelson did in downtown Des Moines. So kind of a coming back home to where it all started and completing out the block. The deletion of the landscaping was not done because we don't like soft green, you know, landscaping. That's not it at all. I think if you look at all of our properties across downtown and the 700 units we own now and are climbing to 1,000, and all the landscaping we have, I think we are known for doing good urban design projects within budget constraints. What this is really speaking to is the 430 East Grand entrance. Our partners, always have to be amenable to our investment partners, we are very concerned that the entrance, the front entrance of 430 East Grand, is shielded and will inhibit the actual use of that building that was one of the first buildings in the East Village to get redone and get additions added at scale. So we're very concerned about that. Eric brought up the shifting of an entrance to East Grand. That is just something that we're studying. That's not something that, you know, we're likely to do. And until we get full costing back, I have no idea. And even if we do do that, based on how the building lays out, we're going to have to keep that as a very important entrance to have flow of pedestrian. So we wanted to not have the planters and the trees in those locations, especially because city staff required trees if we were going to put the planter beds there. So we said, if that's not a city requirement necessarily, then let's take it out of the plan right now. And when we get commercial tenants on the ground floor, let's work with them to decide kind of landscaping so that it integrates with their operations and integrates with their retail space. Because we have a lot of mixed-use spaces in a city of Des Moines, both in the core, the East Village, we own E300 with Zombie Burger. And there's been numerous times where we've tried to guess the landscaping. There's a beautiful pocket park at the Des Moines building, actually. Beautiful, beautiful, amazing, but it's not activated because there's no tenant. And every tenant that we talked to wants modifications that would cost a lot of money. And so we thought, this time, let's do it right, and let's get those tenants on board and then integrate with the operations and with what they're doing. Because that's really how you have a live, work, play environment where it all flows together. So it's not that we're not going to do it. It's just we want to do it in conjunction with the tenants as we bring them on board and not make it so expensive later prohibitively. There's a lot of empty shell retail in downtown Des Moines, and the last thing we want to do is encourage that and keep that going. So that's why we deleted the landscaping. It's not that we don't want to ever put anything there. It's that we might accomplish it through planters, through movable things. I mean, I don't know exactly how we're going to accomplish it, but we want to do that with our tenants that are going to activate it. What else? Anything?
Northwest corner, similar.
To the north side, yeah. This pedestrian space as well, there was landscaping. We deleted that because we're talking to a tenant currently that has, I don't know, I don't want to say too much, but like a speakeasy-type backdoor concept. And they don't want it so shielded, though, from the landscaping. And so, again, we don't want to prohibit leasing activity that creates these whole projects. The other thing I want to point out as well is that the parking garage, which the whole first floor is public parking, the city of Des Moines has leased for 20 years plus extension rates. We do want to make that not so crowded with the landscaping either, because there are inlets right here and here to allow free-flow pedestrian traffic. And we know people take the shortcut path of least resistance. They're not always going to go all the way to East Fourth and the sidewalk and cut down. Like, and we want to create that kind of urban cross and flow. So based on our track record, based on what we've experienced as owners in downtown, these were decisions we made to maintain flexibility, not because we're against any sort of green or landscaping. Anything else? No? Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
So are you okay with the way item six reads in the staff report? You want me to read it to you?
Sure.
The site plan shall demonstrate compliance with the city's landscaping standards for parkway plantings to the satisfaction of the city's planning administrator. All required landscaping shall be maintained for the life of this certificate of occupancy. Are you okay with that?
My challenge is, it's not... There... It's... We don't want to apply city right-of-way landscaping standards because it's not in the city right of way. It's not necessarily required planting area. Right?
Eric?
That's only applicable to the actual street sites.
That's only for the street sites, it sounds like?
So we don't have anything that really addresses your landscape, minimalist landscape at this point?
Meaning you would be okay with the resubmitted site plan? If you pass that, then we're good, right? Okay. Yeah.
Just one more thing, just to clarify, because it's kind of hard to get a sense of how this space... Oh, sorry. Dylan Jones, Genus Landscape Architects.
You were sharing it.
Yeah, sorry. At the end of the alley, you can kind of see towards the east end of the north side of the building, there is still some landscape provided there, and the garage is also putting in curved planters with trees. And there's about seven feet of grade change from the upper alley to the lower alley on the north side of the building. There's a concrete wall at the back of that space, and the planting plan, as shown on this drawing, currently provides space for climbing vines on the bottom and top side of that wall. So as you look down at the end of this alley, you will see a green wall, seven foot tall, which will also help provide, you know, visual softening at the end of the alley. It's not just all concrete. And where possible, we are still keeping plantings in the project to sort of soften the back residential entry and mechanical spaces and providing bike rack parking, or bike parking, rather, bike racks for parking where possible in some of those spaces, too. So, yeah, I think, you know, the goal is to maintain flexibility while softening where possible, and I think this plan does a good job of still providing that.
And softening where possible, meaning like things we can control and know without that commercial tenant. So that's why on the north side, we know where the back entrance for the building is for tenants. So we'll plan landscaping accordingly, and we did. The other thing is, all those trees you see on the north plaza, if you will, are... Were part of... Were part of the parking ramp project. They're going in. So it's like, kind of our overall plan is still creating that even if it's not with the site plan. The only last comment, I probably talked too much, but the only last comment is, the pedestrian alley as well has a curb cut there because we need trash trucks to be able to get back there and service, like pull out dumpsters that we've put in the building. So that's the other functional thing. If we start crowding it too much, it becomes, again, a functional problem.
So Alexander, what was your answer to Greg's question?
Oh, well, Greg's question brought up, we would comply with the item because it is about the city right of way. So if you pass the resubmitted plan, then...
Is this the resubmitted?
I don't think so.
You might have addressed that.
No, go ahead.
Maybe you should try to clear it up a little.
So the staff report went out based on the plan that's in your packet, okay? They're proposing a modification here. So I think nothing in the staff's recommendations really addresses the change that they're proposing. So I think you would have to additionally adopt the modified landscaping plan.
Or revise.
Or something that you deliberate on between you and the applicant, because you literally got a jump ball here at the hearing tonight.
They wanted staff in, whatever needed to continue.
Yeah, yeah. If you wanted us to review it... Again, I've kind of made some comments here, but if you wanted a full review, we would have to continue it probably to get the full staff review and staff recommendation to change that.
I think the words you wrote cover the current plan that we see on our screen. So in my view, we're approving the revised plan that Alexander brought.
Right.
And that's my view.
But the language as written, like item number six...
The language as written covers it, but I think in addition, you want to indicate, if you're comfortable with what they proposed, I think you need to go further in, say, approving the modified landscape plan.
As presented.
Yes.
Okay. But we're not ready to do that yet, so we've got to ask if there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the proposal. Seeing that, it doesn't appear that there might be anybody who has objections or concerns. All right, now we'll close the public hearing, and are you interested in offering a motion?
I'd like to approve staff with the addition as presented.
To item number six, right?
Yep. Couldn't say it more succinctly.
All right. Any questions about the motion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Great. We made it easy for you tonight. So thank you very much. That concludes the public hearing. Could be any staff reports, Eric? Any staff?
So there's... The council will have a workshop on Monday morning, so you should be aware of that. And I believe they will be talking about, briefly, about the procedural portions of the adoption of the code that was sent forth. And then I believe that the plan is at the meeting on Monday that they will be setting a hearing.
This coming Monday?
This coming Monday, yes.
Okay. So that's the... Is that the public hearing? It's kind of confusing all these things.
No, it is not the public hearing. It is the set hearing, but they will be outlining the process of the dates of the hearings and the effective dates and so forth. At least that's our hope. So as Lena said, it could change, you know?
Right. Okay. That's what's kind of confusing to the public.
That's the road we're headed on right now. So I did want to make you aware that if you wanted to attend the council workshop on Monday morning.
All right. The other business from the commission? Seeing that, we're adjourned.